Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, so we are going, I'm gonna call the council to order. Mayor Johnson is not here tonight, so I will be acting as Mayor Protown. If we can all stand to say the pledge, this is our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanest.
Here.
Councilmember Busu.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have an approval?
Both approved, same.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanest.
Yes.
Councilmember Busu.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes. And then our next item on the agenda. Wait, do you read this? Um, no. Okay. I will hand it over to Jessica.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm gonna stay seated tonight and kind of work from this level rather than standing. It does look like there is a lot on this agenda, and it took a long time to prepare all of this. But I think a lot of it is, is simple stuff. They're simple funds. There's not too much that's complicated about them. But we're gonna start off with our, what I would call our most difficult fund, which is the general fund. And let me make sure I'm on the right screen here. So when we met two weeks ago in the end of January, we presented what was a fairly significant deficit. I'll, just to remind you over here on this screen, we were looking at, that is not the screen that I want, I don't think. We were looking at something that was, that was a little bit closer to $900,000 than anything else. And so that was an alarming number. But where we are tonight, after making sure that we have everything figured out as far as we can go as staff, is we're sitting at a deficit of $289,000 for the fiscal year '25 general fund budget. And so there were a number of corrections that we made across departments, whether it was fixing an error, whether it was taking a deeper dive into the central garage charges. That was one area where I would say from the finance side, we didn't have a history to really know what was happening, and things were not done correctly in FY '23. So as we corrected FY '23, we were able to really see where we were in FY '24 and figure out that there were some savings that could be found there in the general fund. The same thing with our telephone charges. That is now a completely different system where departments are only paying for their cellphone charges. And the IT budget is paying for the broader charges for the voice-over-IP phone system. And so where you had a lot of departments that maybe had like previously $2,000 to $4,000 budgeted for a phone, it's now just maybe $100 or less per month for a cellphone. So we were able to go back through and kind of, you know, fix some of those things that didn't carry over from year to year and how you would expect things to be done. We also did the same thing for revenues. Revenues, we went through. The big one that was still outstanding last time we met was the franchise fee. And where were we at? We did get both payments in from Lion Energy and Mid-American. They came in lower than what we had estimated. So we took $90,000 off of what we had budgeted last time. So everything was really moving. And what was distributed in your packet, I tried to highlight. I don't think we copied everything in color. But, you know, where there were highlights of different colors was where we had made some adjustments kind of throughout the budget so that you could see kind of where things were with departments. And so where we are at that $289,000, would we like to be at zero? We certainly would. However, as we're doing the amendment for fiscal year '24 at the same time, one of the things that I had asked Barb to do is just go through the budgeted positions in the general fund and see where we had had vacancies and what were those wage savings that we could see for the current fiscal year. And she reduced out $453,000. And so what I will say is that number was surprising to me. I did not think it would be that much. And the other thing that I think it means for everybody is that there are some positions that are really hard to fill and that haven't been filled throughout the year, but are ones that are really providing some savings to get the current fiscal year back into a positive position. And so as we looked at that, that $453,000 and what that really meant, it gave me uncertainty in what next year really truly does look like. Because we know you will never have 100% employment. That is just never going to happen, though I'm sure all of the department heads would love to see it happen and think about how much would get done if you had that. But 100% employment is just not a reality. And so keeping that in mind, putting together the materials for tonight and coming before you, I did not really feel comfortable making any recommendations or talking with Phil about reducing personnel, which really is that kind of that last area to cut after the departments have really gone through anything where we know that you will see some savings from a less than 100% employment rate in the next fiscal year. I can't say that'll be $453,000 next year, but I do think that it will be somewhere close to the $289,000 to $300,000, along with any adjustments you see in revenue along the way. I really do feel like the franchise fee is a significant revenue in the general fund, and there's just not enough history there to do better projections than the very basic ones we've done so far. So that is where we are at tonight. There really is, is not much change at all. It's pretty much a status quo budget from the current fiscal year to next fiscal year. There is a net zero in positions. So what is proposed is that a Parks Utility Worker would be added and the Accounting Specialist for Payroll position would not be filled upon retirement. And so I make that recommendation knowing that we have an RFP out there for new software and that new software will dramatically change how the finance department operates and save significant amounts of time. And so as I've talked with Sarah about the accountant position, we believe that the accountant position will be able to take over the payroll duties moving forward with new software. We don't have a retirement date at this point, so right now we haven't really prepared for, is there an interim where we need to get a temporary employee or temporary assistants into the department to help with some of the work before new software is in place? And so, but that's where we're kind of at, that there's really no increase in the overall positions, that there's just kind of a net zero, but a swap there.
One other thing that we had talked about with the wages going forward is if, sorry, some miracle, we were at 100% employment July 1, where we had somebody leave during the course of that year, we would look, talking with the department heads, did we need to fill that right away? Did, you know, was there something we could do differently? So we will look at that at the same time to help with that $289,000.
I think the, the big thing that is out there on the horizon is what the state has set in motion with this combined general fund levy and getting to $8.10. And I believe I put it in my memo that in today's dollars, if we were having to be at $8.10, there'd be an additional $250,000 up there as a deficit. So operational changes are needed, but I think we're at this level where it's very, very close in terms of, of what you have for budgeted wages and what you'll likely see for actual wages in the next fiscal year. And that I don't see now being the time to, to make some rash operational decisions and have recommended to Phil that there be sort of a cautious approach over the next fiscal year towards that effort. So are there any questions on the general fund? One thing I will just go ahead and highlight since I have it up here is, you know, we went back and revisited the fiscal year '24, which we'll have more of a presentation about that at, I think, the second meeting in March is when we would intend to set the public hearing on that one to get that approved in April. But we are looking at a $72,000 surplus. There is, you know, that's a little bit down from where we are. But I will say when we started this process of not adjusting out all of those wages and just going through and adjusting the line items that were looking to trend higher for expenditures, that was, that was a significant difference there. So it's good to see that we're back on the positive side. And then the other thing that I'll just quickly point out too is kind of your, your fund balance over here. That with the end of next fiscal year, with that deficit as it's proposed in there, it's still a $3.2 million fund balance that is looking to be in the general fund. And so we'll add to that more than likely with the end of fiscal year '24, and then we'll see where fiscal year '25 ends up as well.
So is it normal to, I guess, like, to have that high in wages for the, in projected vacancies? I guess I'm just wondering, like, when we do our budget, like, or clear up, when you're doing your job every month and stuff too, would that normally be cleared out each month? Like saying that this job wasn't, or it's a end of year thing?
It's, it's, uh, yeah. I mean, once the budget is submitted and in the system, we don't touch it until you all have approved an amendment. And so that's, that's really the only time that we are doing anything with amending the budget. So it's really the only time that you can really take that point of view and then kind of reclaim things is kind of through the budget amendment process.
The amendment process runs very similar to the original budget process as far as public hearing, timing, everything else. So in some cases, if it wasn't as cumbersome, yes, you may look at monthly or even quarterly. But with that kind of process, you're looking at annually, maybe semi-annually.
Thank you.
Okay. If, no questions about the, the general fund, we will move on to the road use tax fund, which is another really big fund on the schedule for tonight. This was multiple pages. I hope the page numbers worked out for you on, on this one as you reviewed it. And so this one, the main source of revenue with the road use tax fund is a, the road use taxes that come from the state of Iowa. The DOT, they give us a forecast each year. And so that is how we come up with our main revenue. But there are some other significant revenues in this fund which mostly revolve around the central garage and kind of the internal service charges to other departments for those services that they provide. The other thing, there are kind of multiple different departments within the general fund, and that's where I tried to highlight those in, in blue so you could kind of see those as, and see the breaks in them as you went through. We have some, some kinds of, some things that are a little bit different of moving forward for fiscal year '25. Specifically, there is an excavator plan to be purchased, which out of the street maintenance portion of the budget, which is, I believe, $330,000. So significant one-time purchase. There are some other purchases that would normally come out of here or another fund for the snow removal, the, the blades and the spreaders for two large trucks. Those are in the equipment purchasing fund and are not coming out of here for this year. Bridge maintenance is essentially just an engineering contract to, to do the assessment of the bridges. Street lighting ends up being a fairly significant budget. It's about $400,000 to keep, in electric bills to keep all your lights powered. There's also traffic maintenance, and there is a vehicle replacement in plan for traffic maintenance. I think it's a Ford Ranger. Okay.
That's for the traffic department to haul barricades and stuff around.
So replacing a vehicle that would be coming out of the road use tax fund. Traffic light maintenance is accounting for a lot of the employees and materials for maintaining the traffic light system. Snow removal, I am sure that those numbers are going to look very different than what is in your packet. Because we, when I printed this, we did not have the January payrolls entered yet. And the January payrolls, I, they're gonna have a lot of overtime and other things on them for snow removal. So that one will look a little bit different. One new thing for fiscal year '25 is that we have moved the engineering wages, a majority of them, to the road use tax fund. So they have previously been in the general fund. And then when, I'll say, when Phil would take vacation or something, it was the general fund that was, that was 100% covering for that vacation. So now with putting things into the road use tax fund, the road use tax fund will be the default for those time off and leaves for the engineering employees. And then what they'll do is they code, and they do this currently, they do code their time for different projects or different things that they're working on. And so when they are not doing something that is road or road use tax or street-based, that's when they would be coding back to the general fund or for to other funds specifically. So we kind of also broke this down that then kind of 75% of, of the expenditures that are currently in the general fund, different supplies and different things like that would be coming out of the road use tax fund as well. So we haven't really talked about starting this in the current fiscal year, but we haven't really gotten too far into conversations about the current fiscal year to know kind of what difference that would make at this point. Just the other function, street cleaning. Alley maintenance and tree trimming is overseen by Jean in the Parks Department. And then there are kind of two funds that act sort of as those internal fund, or two departments that act more as internal departments, the Public Works Building and the Central Garage. And so those have some pretty extensive operations in the road use tax fund that kind of support either road use tax functions or road use and general functions of the city.
Majority of these categories, including engineering, mirror in that annual street finance report. So I think that's one of the reasons also for looking at engineering in here. We were reporting out a general fund in that report, but it makes just no sense to have it here with the majority of that work being for streets.
Just a few other things I wanted to highlight is there are transfers in and out. So I can't remember this specific line item. I think it's 210 with the 6417 is basically where the pavement management program comes out of. And so we are transferring in local option sales tax that will be based on an actual number for supporting the cost of the pavement management program. But then there are funds coming out of here to go to support the street construction program as well. This does, as you can see, we're, we're getting to a lower fund balance by the end of fiscal year '25. And so I think that's where you're going to have to see the transfers out to street construction stock from road use tax as well as then that means the local option sales tax will pick up more of your street construction. So, so something could always change with that, but that's where I really see like things are, things are starting to change here where more money can't keep going out for kind of those one-time expenses that are now becoming regular expenses. So, any, any questions about the road use tax fund? Okay. Moving on then, another very important fund is the Employee Benefits Fund. And this is a new one that I had Chris hand out today because I realized that as I was going through, we, we have been looking at how we move, move the money around to support the retiree benefits differently. And those, those accounts didn't show up on the report when I originally ran it. And so that is what is there now. But the Employee Benefits Fund accounts for a significant portion of the total tax levy, $7.35, to support basically everything that is an employee benefit. And so this is supported across not just the general fund, but the risk management fund, the library fund, the cemetery fund, and the airport fund. So we give those funds a little extra support to help them kind of be standing on their own. This tax levy also supports workers' compensation, which comes out of the Fund 129, which we'll talk about here shortly, as well as the 411 medical costs that come out of Fund 130. And we'll talk more about what those are specifically and as we get to Fund 130 here. And then, as I mentioned, the retiree health insurance, which is more of, well, this, I didn't pull up the right thing. It is... It is here where we've got the retiree health insurance in. So the thing that I'd like to point out is that this does have a healthy fund balance, and that kind of leaves you a few different options of, one, this is not a bad place to have a healthy fund balance because the 411 medical is always going to be an unknown each year. And so making sure that you have enough money on hand to be able to go ahead and cover those costs with cash versus having to potentially put things on the next year's tax levy is a, is a positive thing. The other thing is that I think as you go from year to year, if there are specific property tax targets you're hitting, you can probably look at this in the future to say, is there something here that we can say, we don't need to levy for $500,000? As we looked at it this year, I felt like it was probably best to, to leave it alone. Just looking at kind of the history of the 411 stuff and just moving it to its own fund where it's really standing alone, I think it just made sense for this year. But for next year, it's certainly something worth looking at or for the, the next finance trajectory to, to look at. So, any questions on the Employee Benefits Fund? Okay. Keep, keeping, moving forward. We have three TIF funds. TIF is Tax Increment Financing, so sorry for the acronym for, for everybody. And this is essentially, these are special districts that have been set up where the city can use, utilize incremental taxes or taxes that have been created or value that has been created from a frozen base to help support different projects. And there's kind of three different thing, three different areas which have three different things. And I don't have the history of them, so that's where I will defer to Phil for any history, but I can tell you financially what things look like. Westgate TIF has three development agreements for the next fiscal year that are programmed and as well as looking at sort of some ongoing expenses for Main Street and downtown maintenance. And then also some transfers out for debt service and to the general fund for administration. And one, another thing I should say, these are all funds that have to be requested by the city by December 1st of each year. And so this isn't something that we're sitting here at this time of year saying, this is how much money we need for next fiscal year. Because if we did that, the county auditor would already be, be done with valuations and we would get nothing. So there is forethought and planning that goes into this by looking at your agreements. I should also say, you can only use those dollars and make requests for tax increment financing dollars for items that are in approved urban renewal plan. So there are plans for each of these areas, which lists the things that funds can be used for. And that is how kind of that works. So there are restrictions in place on how these funds can be used. They can't just be used for everything. Fund 126 is the Airport TIF District, and that is just paying debt service only. So just to transfer out to Fund 200. Wildwood TIF, Fund 128, has a rebate as well as debt service and an administrative fee that's going to the general fund as well. Overall, Fund 125, 125 is gonna be under review. We'll talk a little bit more about it with the SMID fund, but we think there are some things there that might change the way that one looks and might put it into a deficit balance with some corrections that we would make in this current fiscal year. Fund 126 has a positive fund balance. And so for the next year, I don't believe you'll need to request as much incremental taxes to be held back for this one. And then Fund 128, it is an area where growth is going to be helping get that out of a deficit position. And so that's where growth can be a, a good thing and a bad thing because we need it to help in this specific area, but it's one of those things that doesn't help on the general fund. So, three funds. There's definitely more detail in your packets about each of these. And I don't know if you have anything to add, Phil?
The only thing to say is, it was in December, I believe, we had the annual urban renewal report. And that's available online too. So the state tracks all of that. What we had requested and the projects and the costs, that's all in that report, as well as the position of where we were looking at each of those was at that time as well. And that's, it's a look back. So it's looking at the prior year and reporting on that. And I think Westgate, the Fund 125, had been in a deficit position for a few years, and it is coming positive. There may be an adjustment, but it's on track to be positive if it, even if it does revert back a little bit here. The Airport TIF has been good, and we actually requested less to help offset that because we really need to have those at a zero. We shouldn't be having positive balances or significantly positive balances because if we do, we need to refund that back to the city, the county, the school district, all of that. So our goal is to be at zero or as close to zero as we can for all of those.
Any questions about the TIF funds? Okay. Moving forward, we have Funds 129 and 130 here. So Fund 129 is risk management. But what it really is, is it's accounting for our property and liability and vehicle and other insurance costs. And so those costs are covered by a tax levy, which is, you know, here's the little snip from our, our current year, what we're working on. So 71 cents of the tax levy will be supporting those costs in fiscal year '25. I don't know if I brought this one up. I don't think I did. But this is one where we are looking at utilizing some fund balance in the current fiscal year and next fiscal year as well. But overall, it's, it's a fund that I think is in a good position. We do know that there is a property insurance increase coming with our March 15th renewal. I would think we're probably, we're within 30 days of that renewal, so we'll be seeing some final renewal paperwork here soon. But I don't foresee that we would need to change this unless something significant happened. So this fund doesn't cover insurance costs for the sewer fund or for the road use tax fund. Those funds pick up their own expenses related to insurance. And so what we typically get is a large bill, which we then have to allocate out by, by the different funds, and that happens in March. So some things will look a little different with this kind of here as we move forward. So we'll probably, you know, see what, if we need to make some adjustments for FY '24, but otherwise I feel like we're pretty good in where we're looking forward. So Fund 130 is a new fund for the current fiscal year. And the police and fire sworn personnel are part of the municipal fire and police retirement system, which is different than the rest of the, the retirement system Ipers that the rest of us are under. And so with that, they are not covered under a traditional workers' comp policy. Iowa code says that the cities basically have to pay for those costs directly. And so those costs were previously in Fund 129. They're supported by that employee benefits tax levy. We decided it's much cleaner to just break those out and then have that as a transfer in to help cover any expenses that are showing up throughout the year. And so we pay the Iowa Municipal Workers' Compensation Association a fee annually to administer those claims for us because they come to us just like any medical bill would. And they review them and do their best to negotiate anything down that, that is received. And then we pay the, we pay the final bill, basically. And so we, we have that budgeted, I think, in a, you know, a fairly standard way, just not knowing what things look like. And this would be something that in the budget amendment, we would pick up any changes that we would know of kind of moving forward. So it's a new fund, but it's accounting for a function that the city has had for many, many, many years and will hopefully provide sort of a, a cleaner history to just view for this very unique expense of the city moving forward and making sure that we have enough money to support those largely unknown expenses. Any questions about 129 or 130? Okay. The next one is the airport. I felt like it probably, for as many line items as there are, I probably should put a few more bullet points up here. But the airport has a lot of different revenues that are mostly focused around fuel sales and rent and service fees of, of various types. So fuel is the biggest revenue, but it's also the biggest expenditure. And in my few conversations with JD, he's talked about how that's a pretty volatile market, but that he does a lot of fuel sales out there. So that's a positive thing for supporting the airport. One of the things that the other revenues that I'll point out is the, the service fee. And it's, it's misleading by what its name is, but that's what it's named. Because the airport is actually located in the county, those entities that are leasing from the city actually get billed two times a year. For most of them, I think it's two times a year, a fee that basically is the difference between the city's property tax rate and the county's, county and township's property tax rate. And so they don't get the benefit of being out in the county but leasing from the city without having to pay the, the level of city taxes, basically. So that brings in a fairly decent amount of money as well. And of course, will vary year to year based on the property tax rate. The expenditures for the airport, there's, there's nothing too crazy with them from year to year. We do provide support for the benefits here in the airport fund. We are showing that there is going to be some use of, of fund balance, but some of that can be misleading. And I say that because of this line item right here, where we have both $70,000 budgeted for multiple fiscal years. And that's because, as we've talked, we... And that's because, as we've talked, we really weren't certain where that building repair expense was going to show up with in which year. And so we just felt for establishing the authority to be able to have that expense, it made sense to just put it in both years, knowing that it's only going to happen one way or the other. So there's kind of $70,000 of extra expenditures in here that we would not anticipate happening. The, you might recall, we did talk about the the two projects that would be mostly funded with FAA and state funds. Those are in Fund 303. There won't be any of those expenses running out of this fund in FY '25. Any questions about the airport fund or any anything you want to add, JD?
No, you've done a good job as far as bringing it up to where it needs to be.
Thank you.
Explain to me again one more time about the $70,000 that's in there for multiple years?
Yeah, as we've talked about it, it it'd be nice if we could get it done in this current fiscal year, but just not sure if it's going to be a this fiscal year thing or next fiscal year. But the biggest thing, especially on a larger expense like that, is having the budget authority. And so airport falls under public works. All the public works functions are grouped together for the purposes of the state form and for setting that authority. And so how do we make sure we don't exceed the total budgeted public works authority? And so rather than waiting for this time next year to potentially catch something in an amendment, we've at least got it in there if it needs to be in there. Whereas in this fiscal year, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. Your your balances, you know, that's just $70,000 you don't spend in this year.
Okay, thank you.
So kind of a a way of playing the numbers. It messes with what the ending balance is projected to be, but ultimately, the there's, there's money there. It's not a fund that doesn't have cash at this point.
Probably could start in May, carry over into July, August, and then you've got the dollars there in those two years to come.
Anything else for the airport? Okay, the next one is also kind of a a quick one that we've kind of talked about here. And back in, we've talked a little bit more about it with, when we were talking about the capital projects, because there is in the 2024 proposed bond, a new hazmat vehicle for $65,000. And the question at that point was, will they help pay for some of it? And I think Pat had a meeting between now and then, and the answer was possibly.
They were all in favor of it, they just wanted more correct numbers.
So so that's where there's, there's more to come on that one. They do, they do have some balance here. You can see kind of where we are budgeting for FY '24 and FY '25 to use more than than what they have coming in. And then there's, there's not much more to say. Was there anything else from the board meeting that to share?
No, not really.
Okay. So quick and easy fun for doing the accounting for another entity that kind of has its own revenue streams and expenditures as well.
And then there's administration fees, right? So we're doing the accounting?
Yes.
I didn't see that.
Thank you, Kara. That is one of the things, 6425, you will see it in some funds, and it is based on 10% of the total revenue. And so that is charged for essentially all administrative functions, whether it's the finance functions, city administrator, HR, IT, you know, there's not then putting, you know, little bits and pieces of everybody's salaries to all these different funds. It's, it's just a flat fee that gets charged out each year. And so for the actual that I think is on these, I think it is through, I think it's through half. Yeah, I think it's through half. So, or that's where we were hoping to be. So any other questions about the hazmat fund?
What's the control factor on that 13-5? What if something goes over or under?
No control factor. It's, it's, we're, the 10%, I think, came from last fiscal year and is carrying over to this fiscal year and is basically saying that, you know, this is what we need. I don't think that's probably overcharging this fund. I think the one fund where there probably is a more of a discussion to have is the solid, or is the the landfill fund, only because you you have a whole department head that is in addition to kind of that administrative structure supporting that. But as I brought that up to Phil, he reminded me that that is a separate board that gets to decide that. And so there's more of a conversation that has to happen there with the entire solid waste commission. But for what will be presented, we've left that at the flat fee of four there.
Thank you.
Yep.
The solid waste administrative fee, just because it's a topic, is also less than 10%. They've just chosen that amount on the solid waste commission. And, you know, you'd have to convince the county to agree with raising that amount, otherwise, I don't know what to do.
Okay, moving on to our next fund. This one is a very, very easy fund. The, there was an upper story housing grant received, community development block grant, and it went into its own fund to account for its revenues and expenses. The only weird thing about this was from the 2022 bond, there was $300,000 that was placed in this for basically the local match, where our local match only ends up being about $15,000. So this does actually have a a decent balance that it's going to end the fiscal year on unless we do something before that. I have, I have been working very hard to make sure that we're spending those 2022 bond proceeds down, knowing that we're, you know, now within, getting much closer to our three-year period where we need to have most of them gone. And so we'll be talking more about that and probably bringing some recommendations forward on a future transfer in and out resolution as to where to put that money and how to, how to basically get this fund to a zero balance so that we can close it out officially kind of at the end of this fiscal year. The next fund, this one is not much fun. This one is also one that, not fun from an accounting standpoint, because you'll notice it's not on the same Excel spreadsheet that you've been getting for other things, because there are so many different projects, past, present, and future that are part of this fund, where there might be a little balance or otherwise. And so we did go through, Zach and I were able to go through and update some things today. And so there are some, still some more updates to come after going kind of going through. But one of the, one of the things that I just wanted to mention is, you know, bond proceeds that we've talked about for things, this is essentially where most of them end up being budgeted if they haven't been for something specific. So like the, the IT stuff, the finance software, the police equipment, the fire flooring, those are in here. Same with anything that would be borrowed for demolition. This demolition budget looks worse than it actually is. There is, there is, I I made a change in a spreadsheet, and then after I've already gotten things to Chris, and so I didn't update it here, but there is, from 174, Fund 174, there's some money coming into this to support demolition. So there's actually over $300,000 coming in, which gets that deficit that's projected for the end of this fiscal year much lower. We do think that there is a likelihood that some of those bond proceeds that are in that CDVG housing fund are coming in here to support demolition. I think we kind of talked at the last meeting about how much there is to do, and that this is probably an area where money will always be needed kind of above and beyond if, if things continue at a very high pace. One thing I highlighted, city housing as well, and it's kind of an after the fact question, this $12,000 expenditure shouldn't be here. What that function accounts for is any of the old city housing loans that have been made. And we are going to be taking a deep dive into this between Lauren with accounts receivable and Zach, as there are quite a few that are sitting out there and have been unpaid, and we need to, we really need to clean up our books on this and see if there is a way to to get paid at this point on some of them. And hopefully then we'll get that to a zero balance and be able to move forward. The City Hall project is kind of the biggest project of the year. We've got more money being transferred in kind of this, this fiscal year than we do probably have in expenses. I put kind of just a million dollars in there as a placeholder for the current fiscal year, two million for next fiscal year, but also less money being transferred in. In balance is still that there's $227,000 to cover expenses that'd be expected in FY '26, and there's still additional money that is not programmed as a transfer in, I believe, from the ARPA fund for this project as well. So there's still more to go on this one that we're not showing, just in kind of the two fiscal years that we have represented. Onto kind of the, the next page, there's nothing too, too different about this one. Here's the City Hall grant match that you all took action to reallocate at the, the last meeting, which will go into Fund 174, which we'll see here in a little bit as well. The miscellaneous unallocated is really just accounting for the interest that this fund earns. There are quite a bit of funds sitting there, waiting to be spent, so there is interest being earned. This also has the cemetery project. The current expenses for the design of that have been coming through this fund. So the mayor and trust was then supporting those, so we've got a transfer in to support those costs. Build the Tamwa is another project that is here. This, I did find that should be 75,000, not 78,200, but regardless, it still leaves that there is a a balance here that we'll want to work on figuring out at some point of where that came from. Probably the, and then, I must not have done anything.
Can you go back to that?
No.
Yes.
Sorry, so go back to this 75,000, say that again, we're trying to figure out where it came from?
Well, so there's this one hun, uh, the hun, there's $60,000 that is a starting balance beyond the 75,000, and I don't know what the history of that 60,000 is. It seems, to just kind of explain the challenge. So these are, it's really difficult to do project accounting in the financial system. In fact, it really doesn't exist at all. And the way that we've kind of gotten around it is by using these project codes as part of the account number system to essentially try and distinguish that. But in 2019, 540 probably didn't mean Hopkins Economic Development Grant, but someone at some point said, oh, well, this is very similar, so we'll just put these bond funds here. And then, and so there is history here that goes back maybe years on some of these that I just don't have, and I haven't been able to spend the time to untangle, to figure out that we're going to have 60, you know, $60,000 there. What is that $60,000? Where did it come from? What purpose was it put there with? And I would say that is going to be true for, for most of these things, like the beach fence, there's a 20,000, almost $21,000 deficit. I haven't talked to Gene about this, but I have no idea, one, why that project would have ran through here rather than Fund 309 versus, you know, like, what is it and how do we go ahead and get rid of that? Like, so there are some things that still really need to be done kind of on what I would call these project accounting workbooks to clean things up. But in the financial system, like, that 20,000 is playing into a fund balance number that, you know, needs to be cleared up as well, too.
So we don't know if we've actually, like, paid it or if it's just kind of there?
I would say it's there. Things tie out when you go across the top on all of them, things do tie out. So I would say it's there. I, I was, Zach and I met about, about this, and I thought I made a whole bunch of changes to things, but I, it appears I did not make a whole bunch of changes to things. Oh, actually, you know what I did? I didn't reprint the, I didn't re-
I was gonna say, I have one that has the changes on it.
Yes.
That's the one you gave me.
Yes.
Should be in everybody's, the new ones.
Yes. So what I did, because this one was a little different, everything that's different just tends to be, be something else. So I changed it on the spreadsheet, but I didn't print a new PDF. So I apologize. This is, this is what things are going to look like a little bit more here. So just kind of going down the line here. Where were we? There was, oh, on what was originally submitted? What was? What, what was originally, what I had brought up? There was the comprehensive plan. Zach and I talked, I looked, there are no comprehensive plan expenses this year, so that cell is hidden. But the next thing they really did want to bring your attention to, oh, and here it is, I did fix, this is 75,000, so the 60,000 balance is what we're saying. I, I have no idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, so more work to be done on that. One thing in why these are kind of all highlighted together is because as we're borrowing funds like we did in 2022, that money is basically going into this 562 function, but then there are other accounts that Zach has for different grant programs that fall under these downtown grants, where ultimately, in the financial system, we're not doing anything, but for the project accounting, kind of outside the financial system is where we're moving balances around. And so that's where I've tried to highlight those things here in this kind of gray line with, which each of these. So putting $60,000 towards the white box and paint program, putting 35,000 towards the restaurant grant program in FY '24, and then additional 25,000 FY '25, and 75,000 towards the facade program in FY '25 of kind of this original money. There will be new bond proceeds coming in, assuming you borrow those as well, which will kind of work on the same system in terms of when we get those, we would credit those to 262 or 562. And then as, basically as Zach is administering each of those programs, he'll know where, where there's more activity or less activity and be able to allocate those kind of across the board. So this is a very confusing fund. I am not looking forward to entering this one into the financial system because of how crazy it is and just how much stuff there is. But I thought this was the better way to give it to you all to look at compared to what a, what those budget worksheets and Excel spreadsheets have been looking like, that it's more the project view and project accounting view of things.
And one of the goals with the RFP for the financial software is to have an updated program that would track projects like this. And so it'd be easier for, pick one of those and say, what is my balance as of whatever date? A report can be wrong to show that, so.
Yes, project accounting is a wonderful thing when you have the ability to do it, and it, it keeps things from going into other funds and other places where, where you don't want them to go. It's, it's kind of keeping everything together in a way where you might still have some of this, you know, Excel spreadsheet work to do, but far less of it than, than what we're doing now. So any questions about Fund 151? Okay, moving on to the SMID district. So the SMID district has its own taxes that it has set to levy of either $1, $2, or $1, $2, or $3 based on where a property is located at. And so that is, actually, that's, that's creating its own property taxes. And then one fun, interesting thing that Phil and I started looking into was the, is it the agreement or the ordinance?
It was in the agreement.
It was in the agreement for the SMID district. There's all sorts of reference to the urban renewal area, because the parts of the SMID district fit inside that Westgate urban renewal area. And so we got some legal clarification, and it does not appear that for, since this inception of the SMID back in fiscal year 21, that property taxes coming in, that are coming in as urban renewal taxes for the TIF district, but are marked as SMID on the forms from the county, have been getting to the SMID fund. So we have ourselves a little project that we have to do when we've got the budget sort of set and ready to go, where we'll be probably making some adjustments to fiscal year 24. And so that's where Fund 125, which is the Westgate TIF district, it does have a balance of $70,000 right now. But I am going to guess that once we are done with our research, that will be in a deficit position, and that that $70,000 and more will be coming in to this fund. There is an ordinance that governs the, these dollars, and that there is a SMID committee that is supposed to be making the requests and recommendations for the dollars to be spent. I've put some placeholder numbers up in here just to make sure things are kind of where they'll be. The agreement with the SMID talks differently about the, the taxes coming in as TIF dollars, the TIF SMID dollars versus the SMID SMID dollars. And so those are to be sent to the SMID group by July 15th of every year. And so we'll be, we'll be doing some extra looking at this fund, but this is where it sits right now for purposes of getting something submitted for fiscal year 25. But this is one that, it's, it's definitely changing from what you have here for the current fiscal year. We just don't know what it will look like quite yet.
So help me understand, so for the SMID, we release by July, and we've already done that, correct? And then for the TIF SMID, they request?
SMID, SMID they request, TIF SMID we're supposed to just release.
So the, the agreement lays out that the dollars that are withheld as part of that urban renewal, that's the TIF SMID dollars, those we have to collect, set aside, which is, we created a new line here that property taxes TIF. Those dollars, per the agreement, are to be released annually by the July 15th. So we would know throughout the year what we've received the prior year. Those dollars get released to them. The other- The other, the, well, we're estimating $27,000. Those, they give us a project or a budget and the council would approve that to be submitted to them as they complete projects. So we kind of hold those dollars and then they submit requests, those get paid off from there.
So we're caught up though paying SMID?
No. No. And actually, I had a meeting with Fred Zesiger and Holly last Friday talking about this. And so we're working on what those amounts would be and looking back to when the SMID was first created to see what might be from prior years that should be given to them. So that's the work to do part of what we would still owe that group. And they don't change year to year depending on what we certify in that Westgate Renewal. So if there's a year where we have to certify a lot of debt, more gets withheld, that means more TIF SMID dollars. Other years, if we have less, it's gonna be a smaller number. So it's not gonna be a constant, which is why it's, I think, looking back and paying that July 15th date.
It just makes it more difficult to certify what you actually need from that TIF District because there's going to be a portion that comes out. But I will tell you, the, this $55,000 year-to-date for the property taxes TIF is an actual figure. Sarah was able to pinpoint that and that about knocked me out of my chair. I did not expect that amount, so that's where I'm assuming for something that's just six months of the year, looking back on three fiscal years, I think we could be looking at a significant dollar amount.
Westgate this year had a higher certification than prior years. So hopefully those last two years will be a much smaller number, but this year was higher because of that.
So more work to be done here, but we do have things correctly entered on the tax levy form to get us to this $27,600 for the property taxes that are showing there. Any questions about this fund?
Surely there's an easier way to confuse us. I can't think of it, so. You're confused as well because of the difference between the two, but I think we're at the point where we've got an understanding.
Yes, yes, it is, it is not easy for anybody. Moving on to Fund 174, this is the Community Development Fund. And I kind of presented this the same way that I did on the 151 Bond Projects Fund. This one, I think I did provide an updated spreadsheet for this one today, too. And so this one's pretty simple. We're getting it down to the point where realistically, there is not much that's still gonna be happening in this fund in future fiscal years. The $250,000, the bond proceeds for the previous City Hall Grant Match, which was in 151, will be put in this fund for repairs and maintenance to this building for the air conditioning and improvements. So that was what you just recently approved at a council meeting. We also, Historic Preservation Plan had their bond proceeds put in here in this fund, but they are located in their own special fund, 177, which we did a brief overview at the last council meeting because there's really not much to it, kind of in and out sort of things. And then what exists kind of in this fund going forward is the legacy roof construction as well as, I'm realizing I'm not showing the updated spreadsheet. It's the legacy roof construction. And then anything more that would be happening with Westin revitalization. But ultimately, there's just a small balance here. And this is another one of those, like, to be honest, like this $40,000 that's under the heading of program incentive. I have no idea when that money would have gotten there or exactly what that original purpose was or what that code might have been, you know, whenever that money was there. And so there's just, like I said, this is another fund where there's been a lot of project accounting that's happening, but maybe things not, you know, staying under a project number that's been consistent. So we just need to go back and kind of, you know, see what we can do with the history that we have in the financial system to try and unwind some of these mysteries, so. So this is another one of those, but there really is very little activity happening in this one for the next fiscal year. Anything, any questions on this one? Because this will conclude the special revenue funds, of which there are a lot. And so we've kind of had those over the last few meetings. And so we are now on to the enterprise funds. The ones that we have for you tonight are the sewer funds. And we have sewer operations kind of as our first one. And this one is also a very big fund when it kind of comes down to it. And let me see if I can find my forms here. But this shows some revenue that is essentially unchanged by, there's no sewer rate adjustments or anything proposed with this revenue estimate that we are providing here tonight. But you can see that we have quite a few different things, different revenues in the Sewer Operations Fund. I will point out, one of the things, we initially had a budgeted transfer in from local option sales tax. This was to support a debt service payment. And so when we met with Tim, our financial advisor, he's like, when you transfer that money in here rather than going directly to the debt service fund, it makes it look like your sewer fund has $530,000 more in revenue than it actually really does because it's just an in and an out. And so we are now in fiscal year '24, just taking that straight to Fund 200 rather than running it through the sewer fund and having it kind of look like revenue that isn't really revenue to the fund. We've also, through our meetings, been able to determine that we have some revenue that in the current fiscal year might not be going to where it needs to go and we'll be working on fixing that in the next fiscal year. So July 1st is when we'll be able to hopefully start breaking things out and using more of our own internal system with accounts receivable to send out some bills versus, that are specialized bills versus waterworks for some customers.
Wait, say that again. So we have, can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so for either John or Philip, there's special charges, like BOD charges?
Yeah, so Dr. Pepper and Parks, they have tennis high-strength waste, so we charge them for BOD fees on top of the regular super fees. The BODs for the extra biological oxygen demand. And right now, that's being charged as part of the regular super bill. We used to break it out, that's what the $120,000 there for, but that money wasn't getting broken out last year. And so it just stayed in the regular super fees. And then the lab test admin fees, lab tests are in there. And correct me if I'm wrong, John, hauling fees are getting credited to administrative fees, the hauling fees that we charge through the whole waste in. And we'd like to get that separated out, too, so we can kind of account for how much revenue is coming in from haul waste versus just regular.
Yeah, we've had close to 200 loads so far this month coming in from outside sources. So it, I'm not gonna say it's an insignificant amount, but those just have not been broken out over the last year, year and a half, so.
Thank you. Yeah, and so what we really want to do is get to the point where whatever is showing up under our sewer user fees is truly the sewer user fee, so that from year to year, there's a better breakdown and comparison of what's being produced annually.
There's also lab tests in there, you'll see lab tests. You'll actually get a resolution on that for Thursday, for next Tuesday's meeting. We're looking to change that a little bit, but that's not important. But we also, we also do lab testing for other entities. Bloomfield Agency Cardinal, some of those outside communities that are half hour, within about half hour, 45 minutes. We can do those because it's not possible for them to get to like the University of Iowa or Keystone over in Center of Illinois, so.
So as we move into different expenditures categories or kind of different departments, very much like the Road Use Tax Fund, sewer, sewage treatment has quite a few different capital purchases planned for this year, which add some significant kind of one-time expenses. Sewer maintenance has one line item that is $770,000 for the replacement of a combination truck. And so that is a very important piece of equipment if.
That is the, it's a combination sewer jet and back truck. So we have two of them now. The old one is 17 years old. And if we order it in '25, I think we can get it by 2027, but make it 20 years old. And so we want to just get it, or now get started, so when it's 20 years old, we can have this new one in and the old one will sell at auction.
But it's not a cheap piece of equipment. And so there's some significant line items that are in here for these one-time capital purchases. Outside of sewer maintenance, there's a function for manhole construction, another for sewer spot repairs, stormwater catch basin program, and then sewer easement cleaning. But the sewage treatment, sewer maintenance are where you're gonna find a majority of your expenses. The transfers out that exist in this fund are for debt service as well as then to the Sewer Improvement Fund, which we'll talk more about just shortly. But we are showing 346, almost 347,000. That would be going out to the debt service fund to pay for some debt service that is not supported by local option sales tax here. So overall, I think the story to tell is, you know, revenues are looking to come in higher than expected. And so there's adding in to the fund balance in the current fiscal year as well as then expecting kind of, you know, to use a little bit more, but there's also these very big kind of one-time capital expenses that we're looking at as well. Any questions about the Sewer Operations Fund?
I'll take on a point, too. You kind of say at the end-of-year '23 balance is pretty much the same as end-of-year '25. And it jumped way up, it's gonna get spent this year. A lot of that is, we'd like to spend money faster, just sometimes you can't spend the money in the year you budgeted, so it kind of gets rolled over. You know, you can probably expect next year that that ending year '25 is gonna be higher than we expect. And we're gonna bring it back down to that same number again in FY '26. So kind of just, just trying to get the money spent in 12 months is sometimes not possible.
Yeah, and just to build on like your conversation about the combo truck, if you order it now, typically, we're not paying all $770,000 when you order. There might be a down payment of some sort, but most of that's due, so we might not actually realize that expense for another two years.
Yeah.
So lots of variability, but we like to prepare for what are those possibilities and what does that look like if you can't get everything done in the fiscal year? Moving on kind of to our next two funds, which are very much related, is the Sewer Sinking Fund. This one is one that kind of baffled me is it's just been sort of sitting there with this balance of 1.377 million. We have three state revolving fund revenue bonds that are being paid out of here or should have been paid out of here. There's specific language in our agreements with the SRF that talk about how you're supposed to set money aside in a sinking fund and then pay out and how much that balance should ever be or not be. And previously, those expenses were coming out of Fund 610. They print some interest on these and then the service fees for these sewer revenue bonds. We are going to take them out of Fund 611 for fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, which will then get this much closer to the balance where in fiscal year '26, the process of the transfers in that need to be done on a quarterly basis should start up again to keep this in compliance with the loan agreements that are in place. So it's not bad to be out of compliance where you have money sitting there that, you know, you're saying is for it, but it's best to be in compliance. And then this end-of-year where you have probably more expenses planned, took a little relief off the Sewer Operations Fund because this was just sitting here. I would also like to point out, this has not been earning interest on and of itself. It seems like in the past, these sewer funds, any interest they were earning was going directly into sewer operations and not to these individually. We've changed that. We are accounting where there is a balance is where there is a balance and that's where the money is going to go. And so you'll see interest here where you haven't really seen anything before.
Are there consequences for being out of compliance?
Not in this way. I mean, the money is, yeah. The amount of money is there, it's just the amount of money has been there continuously and not at the, you know, not changing the way of the agreement reads that it's supposed to.
If it were a deficit, it could be a wrong thing.
100%, 100%, so. The Sewer Improvement Fund is one that we've kind of started the conversation at the council level where this is the one that the ordinance language reads that it can only be used for treatment plant improvements. And the first reading was just, I think it was the first reading?
Yeah, the second one will be next week.
Second reading at the next meeting to add in, to use it for the collection system and for other equipment repairs and maintenance and projects associated with sewer operations in general and not just the treatment plant. And so there is $500,000 that is to be transferred in from the Sewer Operations Fund into this fund, which is something that happens every year, but something that doesn't happen every year and hasn't happened in a long time is moving some money out. Moving a million dollars out to the Sewer Capital Fund to help support the cost of the Phase 8 Division 2 project, which was approved by the council here within the last few months and has a pretty big price tag to it. So using this money helps us cash finance things in some of these kind of earlier phases and gets us to the point where we're sitting in a position where there, you have options at least for how to finance some projects.
And is this one of those funds that does not collect any interest?
It hadn't been in the past. And so we actually, we started doing some things. I should note, too, this transfer from other funds of $52,000, you get into the mysteries of things. It was by pure chance that we were talking with Zach about a transfer that was supposed to happen between the landfill fund and the landfill reserve. And it was that very specific number. We're like, oh, we did that in the sewer fund? Because that's where it was budgeted. And so, yes, so they got a little extra money in the last fiscal year and then we'll be making up some things in the current fiscal year for the landfill. So that one looks a little odd and it was odd, it was a mistake, but it doesn't hurt to set more aside. And that is everything that I have for tonight, everything for the sewer fund. And so we are very, 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 very close. At this point, I don't think we're going to need another budget workshop on February 26th or February 27th, whatever date that was looking to be. We really only have a few more funds to present, the landfill, landfill reserve, and recycling. We're going to put in the net, in the council packet as FYI only, but that will be issued with the Solid Waste Commission Packet as well and discussed at those meetings. And I'm working on kind of a memo summarizing some of that information for the Solid Waste Commission meeting. We have the Gulf Course Fund, which now that the contract has been approved, we were able to get that updated. So, but it's a very small fund, so there's not much to go over there. And then finally, we have our internal self-insurance funds. And so those are the funds that are kind of operating behind the scenes as we take on the risk up to certain thresholds for our own medical and dental costs. And, you know, can talk about what those look like as well. And so those internal service funds are not budgeted. Those will not appear on the budget form because if you do put them on there, it's kind of duplicating some different revenues and expenditures. But we want you to know that they're out there and how they're working and where they're at because their financial performance and health does affect numbers in other funds. And so we want you to be comfortable with where things are at in those funds as well. And I think that that can be accomplished on the February 20th meeting because there's nothing too complicated about any of those funds, so.
Any final questions from the council? Perfect, hearing none, I-
Just a second. I do want to clarify, we are still having a meeting on the 26th.
Yes.
But it will just be for city administrators evaluation. So I didn't want anybody in here to think they weren't having a meeting on the 26th.
No budget information on the 26th.
No monies, no monies.
Does that mean we can scratch off the 27?
Correct.
Amen.
But you just gotta come in the 26th instead.
Come in on Monday. Okay, any other last comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Although, oh, no, you do that, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
Councilmember Busu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galway?
Yes, we are adjourned.